Good morning. And before we get started with the RTC meeting, I wanted to let everyone know that this morning from 10:00 a.m. through noon at the Clark County Government Center, we will play host to the Green Our Planet's Biannual Student Farmers Market, the largest student farmer's market in the nation with 400 students from 40 local schools taking part. So if you're familiar with the Government Center, as you head down the lobby into our area and out onto the amphitheater, there'll be all our local Clark County School District farmer market personnel. Please stop by, pick up some food for dinner tonight. There's an arts and craft festival, and that's from 10:00 to noon. And that public service was brought to you by... Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
It's the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item. Now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Next is to approve the agenda. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is your general manager's report, and we have a few items to share with you. First, we'd like to make a very special announcement. Mayor Deborah March has added another accomplishment to her already long list, becoming a grandmother. Yay! This is her sweet little granddaughter, just born this week. Congratulations to you and your family. The baby's name is Ayla Marie. Ayla Marie, yes? Congratulations. Next, we have recognition. We'd like to recognize a mechanic from our contractor, MV Transportation, Mr. Francisco Castaneda. Do we have him with us today? Francisco? Any chance? Come on down. Come on down, Francisco. Mr. Castaneda works specifically in the parts department, which includes stocking, inventory, and organizing the warehouse, which has more than 25,000 bus parts. Recently, Mr. Castaneda conducted multiple inventory audits and identified $10,000 of obsolete inventory. He successfully negotiated return without the contractor taking a loss. So thank you for your efficiencies and your money-saving tactics. We appreciate it.
Well, I just want to...I wasn't ready to say anything, but...
This is what you get when you save us $10,000.
All right. Well, I want to thank MV Transportation for the opportunity to, you know, work there. I've been there for close to four years now, and I enjoy working there. It's a good environment. I don't know what to say. I'm just thankful. Thankful to have a job, and thanks to my boss, Gustavo Perez, and everybody at MV Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisco. We have another recognition. Next is, each quarter, we like to select a contractor who's gone above and beyond representing the agency. And this month, the RTC fixed route operations team would like to recognize Keolis Supervisor John Jackson. John, are you here with us? If you are, come on down. Mr. Jackson is detailed in his work to address reporting delays in transit service and ensures operations run smoothly during the daily pop-up construction projects. Recently, Mr. Jackson made changes to the reporting methods for the Strip and Downtown Express and Deuce to include additional operation details such as pedestrian flow and police activity to enhance reports provided back to the RTC. His proactive, collaborative, and thoroughness are a shiny example for us all. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I would like to thank the RTC as well as the Clark County and my Keolis team for the opportunity to, for one thing, have a job. Also, to the opportunity to grasp and learn and to take my talents and everything that I can possibly do for the company, for the city, to greater places. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you can go ahead and have a seat. I have a couple more things to share with you, though. I am excited to announce that Way Care recently received Project of the Year Award at the Nevada Fall Transportation Conference. Our partnership with Way Care includes the Nevada Department of Transportation, or NDOT, thank you, Rudy, and Nevada Highway Patrol. Way Care is a technology that predicts traffic crashes and related congestion before they occur, helping to prevent them altogether and enabling first responders to better allocate and prepare their resources. This allows for quicker, real-time reporting of traffic crashes or other incidents on the roadway, faster emergency response, and incident reporting and documentation. But most notable to share with you is that since we have been working with Way Care to detect crashes, we have been able to clear accidents and incidents 12 minutes faster using this platform. And this is getting recognition, of course, not just here locally and in the state, but also nationally. It is absolutely significant that we can predict and prepare for accidents and clear them that much faster. We also have been able to predict hotspots or where there might be an accident or incident and to use our dynamic message signs in order to ask drivers to slow down or will even station, we'll work with Metro, just our Highway Patrol, to station a car in the area. Thus, we have reduced accidents 17 percent to stationing vehicles out there, and we've actually got vehicles to comply with the speed limit. Ninety-one percent of the drivers, when they see these messaging in that car, will drop their speeds down to the speed limit, so. Come to 15th Street. Anyway, very proud of our partnership with Way Care, and again, it's getting national attention. Next, Deputy General Manager M.J. Maynard will share with you our service changes that are coming up.
Tina, excuse me just a second. Commissioner?
What number does someone call? I just got asked this. If you find an object in the roadway, it's probably different if it's on the highway versus, you know, a street in town, but is there a specific...
I don't know that we do have one, but here's...and you wouldn't be able to do this while you're driving, but actually, if you use Waze to go ahead and indicate on the app that there's something, that's one of the ways that our Traffic Management Center gets...one of the quickest ways our Traffic Management Center...
So going through that app?
Gets alerted, yeah. Isn't that interesting? That using social media is actually one of the platforms where we scrape the data from social media to find out what's going on on our roads as well.
So is it just stick with 311 is what I advise them, then if there's something in the roadway?
Dr. Fettahini?
Rudy, would you say as well?
We have 511.
511? Okay. I was just asking, I had no idea. Thank you.
And for FAST, you can call 702-432-5300.
Stick with 511.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, Tina, thanks. Okay, to better serve our transit customers, the RTC is pleased to bring riders a number of upgrades to its fixed route system beginning Sunday, December 3rd...excuse me, December 2nd. This includes adding frequency along Stephanie Gibson due to the rapid growth of the high-density apartments and employers along these corridors. This route, the 115, is the fastest-growing route among those in service more than three years. Ridership at some stops has increased more than 50%. We're also adding more frequency along nine routes that were overperforming or exceeding RTC's productivity standards, and this includes improvements to weekend and evening service as well as overall improved wait times for our customers. In addition, we're making route modifications to some routes due to completed road construction, lane configuration changes, and routing modifications that will improve on-time performance. All scheduled change information will be available on our website via printed materials at our transit centers, transit stops, onboard buses, and on social media. And if you have any questions about that, I can answer for you. Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to check, the problems we're having on Washington, they're being taken care of, aren't they? Isn't it...Mayor, can you remember, wasn't it Washington that they...we had somebody come and speak to us?
Yes, and they'll be addressing today, too.
Oh, they probably have been giving...
Later, yeah. Thank you.
Well, I know that we had some problems there, particularly with school buses and things, so I'm sure they'll contact you to that. Thank you.
Very good. Next, Sidney Coromary, our Senior Director of Human Resources and Compliance, is here to provide you with an update on the security initiatives.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Sidney Coromary, and I'm the Director of Safety and Compliance. The Board requested RTC Safety and Security to provide an update of the security operations, and as background, RTC contracts with Allied Universal for security services. The cost of this contract is approximately $8.4 million per year, and Allied Universal services RTC with 177 officers. 141 of them are armed and 11 are unarmed. We have 17 rovers, eight dispatchers, and an account management team of four plus one full-time trainer. So the duties of the security officers are threefold. It's the safety of our transit customers, our transit system and facilities. They also provide customer service and fare enforcement. Oh, there we go. So when considering RTC data, we compare the national...we compare to the national trend by using the National Transit Database. And this is where all agencies are required to report incidents that are occurring in their jurisdictions. The criteria that NTD uses for capturing an assault to be reported is that an injury must require transport away from the scene for medical attention. So this slide shows that there is an upward national trend of 51% of operator assaults from 2014 to 2017.
Question, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor, please.
Operator assaults or passenger or both?
Operator assaults. We'll cover passenger assaults on that next slide. So as I just mentioned, NTD data reflects the number of assaults that require medical attention away from the incident. RTC, however, captures all types of assaults regardless of requiring medical transport, and that's what this data shows. This slide shows this data. So for the RTC, there's been a 29% decrease in passenger-on-operator assaults from fiscal year 2016 to 18, and the year-to-date data projects that this trend will continue to decrease by approximately 12% for fiscal year 19. So as shown in the orange section, the light orange section of each bar graph, the majority of the passenger-on-operator assaults from fiscal year 17 to 18 represent an open enclosure in the operator cabin. Excuse me. In these instances, the operator opted to keep the safety enclosure window open while operating the bus. But since we've been capturing this data and we're seeing that these occurrences are increasing, we've been working with the contractors to educate their operators to close the safety window while they're occupying the cabin and operating the bus. Passenger-on-passenger assaults increased by 26 incidents from fiscal year 17 to 18 throughout the fixed route system, an increase of 32.5%. And while it's difficult to predict when and where an incident will occur, we do analyze this data with location information, and we work with MV and Keolis to continue reporting these incidents in areas of concern. So to mitigate this upward trend, Safety and Security evaluates incident reports, and we track where incidents occur, when, and where, and then we strategically deploy our security officers to these areas of concern. In addition, when Safety and Security receives reports from operators that they're having issues on their routes or on their bus, we request to have an officer ride with them and increase security presence on that route. So operator training is also key to mitigating assaults. Both MV and Keolis provide routine training to new and existing operators. The training topics include conflict resolution, de-escalation techniques, emergency and critical response procedures, and both agencies invite guest speakers to provide training on various safety topics. In addition, they both have bimonthly meetings with their operators to discuss and reinforce safety procedures. And finally, Safety and Security will be launching the RTC Transit Watch application. This is a new app for Android and iPhone users that allow customers to report incidents and observations through the app directly to our security contractor. It's the See Something, Say Something campaign and technology that other agencies are using throughout the country. This will enhance the safety and security of the transit system for our residents and And with that, questions?
Thank you. Very helpful. Do you then track calls for service from Metro as well or from the individual city police departments?
We have a relationship with the Metro Police Department, and if we do require Metro assistance, we're calling...we're calling them to assist us.
Okay. And just be curious to see if there was...because that would help you identify other problem areas potentially, just depending on the numbers, like we do in apartment complexes and things along those lines. Thank you.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. What are we doing about bus raps? I know because of the issue we had a year or two ago, the difficulty of Metro to be able to see in, yeah.
We did address the problem using an onboard live feed camera that feeds into Metro, but if Deputy General Manager M.J. Maynard wants to add detail, please do.
No, Tina's correct. So we work closely with the Police Department. The 3M material, even enlarging the very small holes that you see, still wouldn't have helped them very much, and they really preferred the live look-in because they can, from any...from their phone, from their desktop, they can look today at any bus, anytime, any route. And there was another issue with, for the double deck, for example, if they...the remote assistance doesn't necessarily have all angles to see inside the bus, the live look-in camera does. So they...we work closely with the Police Department, and they're very happy with this technology that we're using.
Thank you.
On the Transit Watch, you indicated that if someone uses this app, it goes to our security vendor?
Contractor...I'm sorry. Yes, it goes straight to our dispatcher so they can dispatch security officers to the location if necessary.
To our dispatcher, RTC's dispatcher?
The dispatchers are Allied Universal.
Okay. And when...how would we be notified? We, the RTC?
There's behind-the-scenes part of that program is...it's a computer program, so when a complaint comes in, it is displayed on the screen in the dispatcher's office, and then it...and then they call out for help if necessary.
Okay, so in real time, the RTC would be notified pretty quickly?
Correct.
Great. Commissioner?
Thank you. So it's about an $8 million contract overall for Allied? Is that their dispatch officers and so forth? And how many security guards do they have?
We have 177 in total. 141 of them are armed, 17 unarmed, and the rovers, there's 17 rovers. These are security officers that are driving and addressing incidents, and the eight dispatchers in dispatching units located at IBMF and SMF, and we have...but this also includes the account management team of four and one trainer.
So 141 are generally on a bus route riding, but you have then floaters that like...and that...oh, not that. One of the other agencies has someone, like TAs. They have different individuals out there that can come on to a call, so that goes through your dispatch as well. So you don't have to necessarily call Metro unless it escalates.
That's correct.
That probably saves officer time then in the long run, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we had one more recognition that you might share with us.
Thank you, Tina. And we are starting today with our inaugural citizen recognition program, and very fitting that this first recipient, Mr. Alberto De La Pez Paz with Silver State Transportation. Alberto, come on down. And if you know him, he's at just about every RTC meeting. An incredibly humble, hard-working, and compassionate family man, business owner and community philanthropist. His love for Southern Nevada and our community has been demonstrated repeatedly through his random acts of kindness and donation of his time, talent, and resources to organizations such as Safe Nest, Hope for Prisoners, Opportunity Village, UNLV, and the Smith Center. As an RTC contractor and owner of several businesses, Alberto attends RTC meetings regularly to stay abreast on transportation issues. During our most recent RTC meeting, he, after hearing some comments from Mayor Goodman, observed a mother expressing challenges with her son who has a disability. Alberto has generously offered transportation to help mitigate this situation. For those of you who do not know him, just spend one minute, and you will experience his genuine spirit and compassionate soul, and he is...he is one of the most humble human beings you'll ever meet. He does so much without any recognition. Just on those that we named, I'm sure this probably scores more of organizations and individuals that he and his family have helped. He is just the epitome of giving back to the community, and on behalf of the Board, it's a great honor to have him as recognized as our Citizen of the Month.
And I will just have to add, as you're taking your photos, that certainly we work with a lot of contractors, local, international. Alberto is probably the most passionate about his community and always making the right decision. Business decisions seem to come second to him. It seems that he's more dedicated to his community and doing good than anything else, so thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank the Academy. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the RTC for allowing us to do the work. Partners like Keolis, Alan Hayes, and Francis, and also Don with MV, they, by being partners with them, they allow us to use the money to use it here locally. Last meeting, Mayor Goodman made a call to help, so my brother Mark and I stepped up, and we wanted to help Stephanie with her wonderful son, who...and now I can see why she's so passionate about being here. She's a wonderful young man, and we're allowed to help him, and thank you, Stephanie, and thank you all for helping us. Thanks.
Should I have the microphone before you go? I do want it. Whoops. I turned it off. Well, then maybe that was purposeful. I would like to just add one more comment. The first time I met Alberto, there was a company, an automotive company in the heart of the city, that had been in operation for over 20 years, and it was during the recession. And the business was going to be lost, and employees that had been with the company since it was founded were going to be out of jobs, all with families. This gentleman took over the company and saved every single employee, every single employee, and that was still in the heart of the recession. He's simply beyond incredible, and for the inaugural citizen recognition, I mean, I think it's just so appropriate that he is the one we're recognizing, never doing it for any publicity at all, ever. And so Alberto, you're beautiful, I'd like to adopt you.
Or clone you, or both.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report from our Director, Mr. Rudy Alphabon.
Thank you, Tina. I'd like to start out with just expressing appreciation to the RTC of Southern Nevada for presenting a recent conference. The International Road Federation is having a conference at the Tropicana this week, and the folks from RTC are talking to them about traffic operations in the valley at the FAST facility, and as part of the conference, they're hosting a technical tour tomorrow at the Traffic Management Center, so I wanted to express my appreciation. This month's Transportation Board meeting will be held in Las Vegas next Wednesday due to the holiday. After the meeting, Governor Sandoval is going to address the Project Neon team, the workers that have been working very hard and diligently to, you know, recently, we had the lanes kind of go back a little bit to normal on I-15, a little bit more lanes, a little bit more room for traffic. Still some work to be done as we head into the home stretch, and we'll be finished next spring, but we really appreciate the Governor coming down to give thanks to the workers on that project. Next week, we're going to be presenting to the Transportation Board the first set of agreements related to the Clark County road transfer associated with the Southern Beltway. So NDOT is going to take over maintenance within 30 days of execution of that agreement on the Beltway between Stephanie and Warm Springs, and Clark County will take over the maintenance of portions of Charleston Boulevard, Sahara Avenue, Russell Road, and Tropicana Avenue. That's just certain segments of those, and in some locations, it's only half the width of the road because half is in the city of Las Vegas and half is in Clark County's jurisdiction. We're working on the city of Las Vegas transfer agreement as well. And within 18 months, we'll have all the legal descriptions and all that effort from right-of-way to complete the transfer legally of the ownership of the right-of-way. NDOT's having preliminary discussions with a company called Brightline. They're the company that acquired the rights to the high-speed rail project known as Express West. That's going to be built from Las Vegas to Victorville. So I believe that they're trying to put together their funding for the project and working with the Federal Railroad Administration on the...any approvals necessary. They previously had an environmental impact statement approved from the feds, but it's got to be updated a little bit for the current situation along the...any improvements that have been made along that corridor on I-15. But we're reviewing a memorandum of understanding with that company, Brightline, and it will lay out how we'll work with them on reviews and planning and design and construction of the project. December 13th, we're going to have the Garnet Interchange there at I-15 and US 93, ribbon cutting for that interchange reconstruction. Hopefully, the Governor will be in attendance at that. We're also excited about the recent elections, and we're going to have a new Transportation Board taking their seats in January, so we'll definitely look forward to meeting with Governor Zalax transition team. And that's it for the Director's update from NDOT.
Thank you, Rudy.
Very good. Next is your consent agenda, which is made up of items 5 through 24 and may be taken in one motion.
Is a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you. Deputy General Manager M.J. Maynard will take item number 25.
Thanks, Tina. Item 25 is to appoint an evaluation committee to assess the performance of the General Manager for the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. It's the practice of the Regional Transportation Commission to evaluate the performance of the General Manager on an annual basis. In keeping with the Board's past process, it is recommended that the Board consider appointing a committee of the Commission's members to review the General Manager's performance and recommend goals and objectives for 2019. The committee's recommendations will be presented to the Board for considerations.
I would make a motion that Councilwoman Tarkanian, Mayor March, Commissioner Brown be part of that committee. be part of that committee. And always welcome additional volunteers. Is a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
And Deputy General Manager will handle item number 26 as well.
Item 26 is to receive a presentation on the RTC's response to the Federal Transit Administration's Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, paratransit review. Kenny Rodriguez, who is the manager for customer care and certification, will present that to you.
Thank you, MJ. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Kenny Rodriguez. I'm the manager of customer care and certification. Today, I'll be presenting on the FTA paratransit compliance review findings. Annually, the FTA selects up to four transit agencies to review operational practices and regulatory compliance. The FTA submitted a final report of their findings in April of 2018, with the RTC sending our final response in October of this year. Out of 30 categories reviewed by the FTA, the RTC was asked to enhance nine of those 30 paratransit operational categories. This presentation will detail RTC's policies and practices and the recommendations made per the FTA. Category 3 looks at ADA paratransit eligibility standards. While the RTC has always inquired about barriers that may prevent customers from using our fixed route service, such as lack of sidewalks, the FTA directed the RTC to perform a deeper dive into this area and obtain more specifics. And where applicable, have RTC staff perform onsite reviews of problematic paths of travel to ensure equity for all applicants. As you're aware, the RTC provides eligibility assessments at our Mobility Training Center, or MTC, which is primarily an indoor testing facility. The FTA has asked that the RTC include additional testing areas outdoors, including street crossings, to provide a more real-world feel, which also increases the walking distance for extrapolating purposes. Category 6 looks at written eligibility determinations. Prior to the review, the RTC was providing customer determination letters explaining the reason for the client's eligibility. The FTA directed the RTC to modify the eligibility letters to include more detail of the determinations used to identify barriers, conditions, and RTC's reasoning for said determinations. Category 8 speaks to the administrative appeal process in which the FTA directed the RTC to ensure we're able to hear appeals within 30 days of the applicant's request. As you're aware, the RTC previously had one certification appeals officer, and thanks to the Board's direction, we now have five individual appeal hearing officers, which is allowed for strict compliance within this review process. Category 9 considers the process used for visitors requesting ADA paratransit service. Previously, it was RTC's practice to direct visitors to provide proof of eligibility from their respective paratransit agency by faxing over customer eligibility status. The FTA wanted the process to be more user-friendly. As a result, the updated policy allows for customers to request the use of RTC paratransit services without requiring documentation of a disability. Category 12 speaks to the RTC's response time to a customer's reservation request. Previously, if a customer requested a pickup time, for example, and there were no times available, the RTC customer care agent would inform the customer that we would call them back to confirm the request before the close of business. This allowed the scheduling team to manually place the trip into the most efficient route. The FTA requested that the RTC confirm all trip requests within a pickup time during the initial call without requiring a callback. Category 21 looks at paratransit trip lengths, or the time it takes a customer to travel to and from a location. The FTA and ADA require that paratransit trip lengths be similar to the equivalent fixed route trip. In other words, if it takes a person riding fixed route one hour to travel from origin to destination, then it should take a paratransit customer the same travel time or less. The FTA asked the RTC to define a metrics to measure paratransit trips in comparison to similar fixed route trips, which we've done using our Trapeze scheduling software. I'm pleased to let you know the analysis showed the RTC complied with this standard. Ninety-seven percent of the time, paratransit trips were equal or less than similar fixed route trips. Category 22A directs the RTC to measure all telephone hold times. Previous practice had RTC ensuring 90% of all calls were answered within three minutes. The FTA directed the RTC to begin monitoring calls on an hourly basis, which is now in place. Also, since the FTA review, the RTC has added two additional positions in the customer care department, which assisted in meeting this new standard. Category 22B speaks to appointment-on-time performance. This particular category has proven more difficult for the RTC to readily address, and as such, we've asked the FTA for a four-month extension. As background, the RTC is not allowed to ask trip purpose when a customer schedules a trip, and that includes when someone asks for a specific pickup or drop-off appointment time. The majority of customers would prefer a specific appointment time, which results in more of a taxi-like service, requiring more service hours, drivers, and vehicles. The number of appointment requests has increased by 33% year-over-year, and as such, we're working closely with our contractor, TransDev, to look at various scenarios to improve in this category. Options we are looking at include adding additional service hours, taking a deep dive into our scheduling software to ensure optimum performance, and deploying new dispatching techniques in conjunction with our new mobile data terminals that were installed September of this year. We'll be sure to keep the Board updated as we work towards improving in this area. Category 24 speaks to the RTC's service suspension and appeal policies. When a customer is suspended for violating the RTC no-show policy, there is due process for the customer that includes a two-level appeal hearing. Our previous process did not include an in-person option for the second-level hearing and had the second level of appeal going to the Director of Paratransit. The FTA directed all second-level appeals include an in-person hearing if requested by the client, and that the second appeal go to someone outside the paratransit department. We have updated our policy to include both of these recommendations. Are there any questions that can help?
Comments or questions? Commissioner?
I know that on the appeal side, we had an issue over about a year ago with the individual that was conducting the appeals, and that individual's no longer with us. And we now have a much more streamlined process. It's much, you have five individuals. Okay. That was part of, so that may have actually happened before this study was actually done. So, I do appreciate that the staff recommended, dealt with that one because that was part of the problem that was out there. In, so we've addressed everything that came up in the audit.
That is correct, with the exception of the four-month extension asked for the appointment-on-time performance. For the appointment-on-time performance, we requested a four-month extension.
And tell me now how it works if you call a customer no-show. Tell me what, how that comes about.
So, back in 2015, we modified our no-show policy to be a much more lenient policy. Previously, you would be assessed points if you called in after 6:00 PM. New policy in 2015 allows for no points to be assessed within two hours. So, if you call up to two hours prior to your trip, then you would be assessed points only within that two-hour window. And it's based on a percentage and points combination. So, it's not just, and this came up as depending on how often you ride. So, we didn't want to just look at a strict number of points. It's based on percentage of trips also.
So, if somebody has a job, they can book five days a week ahead of time?
We book three days, one to three days in advance.
Was that looked at? I mean, if somebody has employment, I would think he could book ahead of time for a longer period.
So, I've been here 12 years almost, and this actually change occurred before. I believe they scheduled much further out, and what they seen was a higher no-show rate when they had more days available.
I also think it's worth mentioning that we do subscription service, and the FTA allows up to 51% of trips scheduled as a sub. And the subscription, it works really well for those folks that are working, that have a regular schedule up to five days a week.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
Your next item is item number 27, to receive a financial overview presentation regarding the RTC transit system and direct staff accordingly. And our senior director, Mark Trozdahl, will handle that item.
Thank you, Tina. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mark Trozdahl again, Senior Director of Finance for the RTC. I also have Guy Hobbs with me here. He's one of our financial advisors. We were asked to prepare a financial status of the transit fund in last month's meeting, and so we have done that. I want to emphasize that this is just the transit fund, not the streets and highways and motor vehicle fuel tax and FRI, just transit.
And I want to emphasize that it's going to be a lot of numbers that we'll go over, but these numbers are really important and will probably promulgate additional discussion and direction from you as we move forward. They're significant numbers that we need everybody to understand and pay attention to. So, if you have questions, please ask them as we go through.
What we've been asked to do is show the revenue sources for transit and then also how that money is expended. Our first slide covers those revenue sources for operations. Sales tax makes up 65% of our revenue for transit service, and fare revenue makes up 32%. So, 97% of our operating revenue is in those two categories. We do have some transit advertising and some operating grants at about 1%. To look at our revenue over time, you can see the solid lines are actual revenue numbers for the sales tax and the fare, and then that top line is the total. You can see the recession back in 2009 and '10, and then a nice recovery in sales tax and fare revenue. But then you can see out in the blue line, the bottom one, the fare revenue has declined over the years. And what we'll do is review both sales tax and fare revenue. In the past, again, this chart, you can see the solid line, the history, and then the, in the future, that three and a half percent there, under there, is what we are projecting. Our actual historic increase year-over-year is 4.5%. And to be conservative, we do project 3.5%.
Excuse me, Mark. Mayor Goodman?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and only because you asked on point as you go through this. When we're talking about taxes, and we're not talking about the fuel revenue tax, are we talking about the allocation from the LVCVA on room tax that's awarded to transportation? Do we get a piece of that?
No, we don't. We just have a, the RTC receives in total a half a percent option sales tax. That's all we get. And 3/8 of a percent goes to transit and 1/8 goes to streets and highways.
So, then in follow-up of that, Rudy, I would gather you're the one that gets that money?
I think county.
NDOT received some of that $300 million bond from the LVCVA, and that went towards the I-15 South design-build improvements from Blue Diamond about their up to drop.
But a portion goes, there is a portion that goes to the county for roadway infrastructure for just within the resort corridor of LVCVA.
Resort corridor, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, one thing to think about for sales tax, as you can see from this chart, it's been a while, eight years since we've had a dip or a recession in that sales tax. We don't know when the next recession might occur, but for long range, we do estimate 3.5%, even though that might move around a little bit. Mr. Chairman, Guy Hobbs, Hobbs &amp; Associates, I think I'll be doing a couple of comments as we move along. But talking about sales tax, again, on your transit side, you are roughly 2/3 dependent upon the performance of sales tax, nearly 1/3 on the performance of the fare box revenue. So, part of what we're talking through with you today are the strengths and the weaknesses of that foundation of revenue that you have. Sales tax is a growth revenue at this time. Those of you who have local government budgets are enjoying higher growth rates in C-tax today than you were a few years ago, and it's great. But as Mark pointed out, the last down cycle that we had began in roughly 2007 and lasted the full amount of the, the full recovery probably not until about 2012, when we achieved levels that were commensurate with those that were pre-recession levels. So, you still have that period of loss. And without sounding too negative, we, the finance people never like to sound negative at all, we know that over the period of time that's covered by those dotted lines, you will experience another down cycle. Now, the duration and severity of that down cycle is unknown. I wouldn't imagine it would be anything like the severity and the duration of the last one, but only time will tell. The point there is that we have to, through our policies and decision-making, be prepared for eventual changes in the performance of revenue. One thing that just happened a couple of days ago, by way of example, on the ballot, and it certainly isn't suggesting whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, that the people voted for two additional sales tax exemptions. Our sales tax base continues to be modified over time by both implicit exemptions and explicit exemptions and by other acts of the federal government, internet, sales, those kinds of things, all affect this sales tax line. So, again, it isn't to say that we currently have a crisis with respect to sales tax. It's just simply to say that our reliance on sales tax means we're exposed, just as your local governments are exposed, to volatility over time. Thank you, Guy. The next slide is, shows our fare revenue trended over the years. You can see the top line there, that orange line, that we enjoyed increased fare revenue up through about fiscal '16. And then the TNCs came to town, started operating on the Las Vegas Strip, and we started seeing declines in our fare revenue. Especially if you look at the blue line, which is the strip fares, you can see that one has declined. We're also estimating over the next few years that that will continue to decline. The challenging question is, when will that stabilize or level off? And we don't know that, if that will continue to decline for more than two or three years or level off. The Medicaid line at the bottom in red, you can see that that peaked in '14. That's when Medicaid reimbursement just started. And so, that was actually three years of revenue in one, and that's why you have that lump there. And then you can see that we're projecting that leveling off at about $8 million a year in reimbursement for Medicaid medical trips for paratransit. The thing to note about that revenue is that only provides us 65% of the cost. So, we need to subsidize 35% with sales tax for that, those Medicaid medical trips.
Mark, if I could, keep that slide up just for a second.
Oh, yes.
And we'll talk a little bit about it later. But the strip fares in the blue and the general market fares, just to bring to the Board's attention. The strip fares, obviously, with the TNCs, we've seen year three of declines. And that dotted line, we're not sure, nor is anybody in the market to the best we're aware of, when that decline is going to level off. So, there's a big question mark, and certainly the strip fares impact the general market fares. There's a big question mark on the fiscal impact, not only in this fiscal year, but the next few. If those lines continue to decline, certainly going to have an impact on our overall transit budget. And we'll talk a little bit about that later.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, just a couple of comments. Again, we don't know what the point of stabilization or equilibrium is for the strip route. And of course, the general market fares in most other communities have been affected by the same causes that we've identified here. And we would expect that to continue, particularly as other forms of alternative mobility along that corridor come into that market, whatever they may be. I suppose seven or eight years ago, it was hard for us to imagine what the TNC I suppose seven or eight years ago, it was hard for us to imagine what the TNC impacts would be on us. It's hard, at this point, to look forward six or seven years. But if you were to just continue the downward trajectory that we've seen since 2016, that is well below the dotted line that you see on this graph. And we're looking at other communities to see if they've... who've had TNCs in place for a longer period of time, to try to determine whether they've reached a point of stabilization, or as importantly, what they have done to offset the impacts created by that, whether that be regulatory or revenue or other such things. We're in the process of reviewing that as we speak. Okay, moving forward. The revenue impact, what we've noticed is since 2016, when the TNCs... Before that time, before the TNCs started up in '16, we used to enjoy a $6 million profit, if you will, or revenue subsidy on the Las Vegas Strip. It's one of the, you know, only transit routes in the nation that makes a profit. We enjoyed $6 million every year from that, and now that has declined down to less than $1 million a year. Since that time, the middle column here, our reduction in revenue has, in a cumulative way, decreased $13 million since that time. So what we've noticed is that this pressure that Guy mentioned nationally with the TNCs, and there's a downward trend in ridership for public transit nationally, and our strip route seems to be very consistent with that.
Commissioner?
I also heard that recently someone studied the fact that because of the TNCs on the road, and I'm not anti-TNC, I think the world has changed the way we know it, but have added to congestion and the wait times for individuals. So that's just an interesting loss of revenue, but then there's another impact that comes in on quality of air, time, and so forth. So I thought that was kind of... if that was accurate that I heard about.
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner June Kiliani's point, some of those communities that we're looking at that have had a longer experience with the TNCs that we have... that we've had, have identified that issue and are looking into it and looking into mitigation methods that would include things like congestion pricing and other things that some European cities have had in place for some amount of time.
Fans have been doing that forever, and it's actually... They do it in London, have for 20 years. Paris does as well. So there... We may need to have that, or you all will have to have that kind of conversation. I won't be here. But on the policy side of that, because there's a real recognition on the quality of life that comes along with some of that as well, and then how you price points some of that. It's another argument for light rail, which would be run by public, which would be convenient for folks. So hopefully, that conversation continues, too.
Mayor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, really to you, Guy. On the TNCs, I know they have to pay a business tax. Is there anything you're exploring in that avenue where that tax would go into the public transportation piece? Just as a thought, because I know we have cabs, we have limos, we have everything else, but this is the biggest impact forever. And so maybe there's a portion of their business tax that would come to subsidize public transportation for the greater good.
When, Mayor, as you know, when this was approved by the legislature in 2015, they did provide for a 3% of revenue assessment on the TNC revenues, and that goes largely to the state of Nevada. None of it goes to compensate locally. What other communities are doing, and again, that's one of the reasons we're researching it right now, how have some of the other communities responded to some of the same types of negative externalities, if you will, that we're dealing with, whether that's reduction in fare revenue or increases in congestion or whatever it may be? And certainly, the economics of the operation are a way that they're doing that. There are two types of charges that we've seen out there. One has to do with percentage revenue, whether that's gross or net, and the other has to do with frequency of trips. Again, we're gathering that data from other communities who have had longer experience to see what kinds of things might make sense for you all and other decision-makers with respect to making laws. We are not allowed, as local governments, for example, the way the law is currently written, to enact any kinds of fee or charges on TNCs. It's very specific in those statutes that we cannot. But given the fact that they are statutes, they could be changed by any act of the legislature to provide for that.
Well, and in furtherance of that, because we're dealing with it comprehensively throughout the nation, everything, everywhere, are the short-term rentals. They're very similar in nature to what's happening with the TNCs, where the private individual is leasing out their property for short-term rentals and really isn't helping subsidize much of anything as it changes the whole balance. So I think what's going to be good for the TNC and for the public, the better good for the public, is the same thing that we're looking at around the country with the short-term rentals. So we'd be very curious as the updates... I know it is legislative, but I think comprehensively for the cities to get together to support whatever comes out of your investigation, so when we are in front of the legislature, we're all pulling the same way.
I have a question. Do we know what the state is doing with that 3% TNC? I mean, is that going to roads, or is that... Maybe that's money that really we should have a conversation and bring that 3% back to Southern Nevada?
The Department of Transportation, the State Highway Fund receives $5 million per biennium of that, and the rest of it, I think, is used for the general fund.
Interestingly, just... That is a good point, though. So it's... The state will be using it for their state infrastructure, where really the impacts that we're feeling are on the local roads and the local businesses. So that is a conversation that we may want to have regarding where that money goes.
Mr. Chair? Does that $5 million, do we know what percentage that represents?
That's a very interesting question, Mayor. Trying to get information about operating statistics for the TNCs has proven to be a rather elusive activity, to say the least. Part of the way the law was written makes some of the information that they're required to maintain proprietary, which we certainly can understand. There's proprietary information that the hotel casinos report for the gaming abstract that stays proprietary. They're also required to file an annual report by May of each year on their prior year's business activities, and we're still in the process of trying to obtain a copy of what should be at least two of those reports for our review and have yet to have an opportunity to review that. That's where we think we would get the information that would tell us what the revenue potential, as well as the revenue production capabilities are.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Excellent question, and that was part of... The legislation was written by Mr. Roberson and the companies themselves, unfortunately. And so there were a lot of restrictions that even Rudy doesn't, you know... They didn't have any input on that part of it. It was just a flat fee. Get rid of it. Get... Buy off something, and then the majority goes into the general fund. But there will also be a discussion, I believe, again, in the session about autonomous vehicles or electric vehicles. And I don't want to discourage people from purchasing, but they're on our roadways as well. So hopefully, there's something that comes up on that. And then years ago, when they... This is a whole lobbying thing, too. In order to accept credit cards, which they've done around the world forever, one individual was able to get statutorily $3 could be added on, and that's a chunk of change. That's also hurting the taxi industry because it doesn't go to the employees. It goes directly into the pockets of the owners of those companies. There is probably going to be some attempt to dereg, just the industry in and of itself this session, I have a feeling. So there may be a few places where we might be able to take money that was going for one thing and be able to bring it back locally or modify it somehow. So that was going to lead me to with the new elections that just came in. Do you get to present, or I know they do training for the individuals as new legislators. Do you get to present to them in December or January? Do you know offhand? Angela?
We will. We're working with LCB, so now that everything is settled, typically, they come in January. And so we give them an RTC 101 presentation, and we take them on a tour. We work hand-in-hand with the Nevada Department of Transportation, the county, the city. Anybody who wants to come with us to showcase projects, we'll develop the agenda, and then we work directly with LCB.
So I would just make sure that this is a component of that update on RTC, so that they understand what was done previously. It's a whole new group now, and you might have an opportunity, much more of an appetite to modify or change some of that. But I would hope that this would be part of the presentation that goes to the new folks in the lawn. Thank you.
Okay, we will transition over to the transit operating expenses. This is a pie chart that represents actual fiscal year '18. You can see the big piece of the pie chart, the yellow there is our two fixed route contracts that represent 48% of our transit expenses, and then our paratransit contract is 20%. So between the two, they're almost 70% of our operating expenses. Then we have a few smaller items. Security, that was talked about earlier at 4%. Our fuel expense is down to 4%. And transfers to our administrative fund make up about 5%. And then wages and benefits for RTC staff that work in the fixed route and paratransit and oversight and working those systems, that's about 7%. One of our... And then other comes in at 12%. This next chart is very busy with a lot of colors and represents other expense, and that total is $28.7 million. You can see that a big part of that is bus repair at 20%, shelter cleaning and maintenance at 11%. Our utility bill costs us about 10%. And these percentages are just of that other category. So there's a lot of categories there of expenses, and that's what other is usually made up of, is a lot of small expenses. We built... We will be analyzing those expenditure items for possible savings in the future. Now we look at our operating expenses trended over time. These operating expenses for paratransit and fixed route are from our National Transit Database, or NTD, reporting. And what they do in that report is allocate all those expenses we just talked about to each service. And so we look at the top line, the blue is the total. Then we have green, and you... The bottom line is yellow. You can see, again, during the recession, when we were cutting service hours on the fixed route on the green line, you look at the yellow line, and that one, it's hard to see here, but it is increasing at that same time. Paratransit is a service to where we can't deny rides. We need to budget for that first, and that's the service that is a little bit harder to manage than the fixed route. In fixed route, we can cut service hours. Paratransit, we can't do that. And so what we see there is that the line to the right are projections of those services continuing for, you know, in the expense category there. On the green line, that... Those projections do not include any increase in service hours for fixed route. So those are just rate increases and inflationary increases into the future. To make the point a little more easy to understand, we've done a bar chart here comparing 2008 with 2016 for those expenses in fixed route and paratransit. You can see that fixed route increased by about $19 million from 2008 to 2016, and paratransit increased about $15 million over that same period of time. To look at that as a percentage of those services over that period of time, fixed route increased by 14% and paratransit increased by 46%. Another thing to note here is over that same period of time, our sales tax revenue only increased by 10%. So the point there is that's not really sustainable over a long period of time. To now look at our operating expenses and compare those with the revenues, you can see our history again in the solid lines and what we're projecting in the dotted lines. You can see the recession where we went... Expenses exceeded revenues periodically, and then we, after the recession, have had a nice gap between revenue and expense. That gap is real important. That provides us money for our capital program or our bus replacement program. We need about $13 or $14 million a year to pay our local share of what our bus replacements are. That is... The majority of that funding comes from the FTA in grants. To... So the projected lines, you can see that gap has disappeared. What we've done is prepared another chart that shows our total revenue, which includes operating revenue and our grant revenue or capital revenue, and then the total expenditures, which includes operating expenses and our capital expenditures. So you can see that, you know, from about '11 through '16, everything looked pretty good. The green line's above the red line, that's where we like it. And then our dotted lines, you can see in the future, we're projecting our expenses exceeding revenues, which, again, is not sustainable. It's based on the scale of this chart, it's, you know, maybe difficult to see that that's a real big deal, but it really is. The difference between those lines ranges between about $4 million and $26 million a year. So that is a lot of money per year and adds up quickly. So the actions that we want to take into the future is we need to right-size our expenses to come in under revenues. And so we will be looking at some cost containment measures in the future. We'll be analyzing our contracts for possible savings. And in our preliminary discussions, we're looking at the 2020 budget, and we will be adding no new fixed route service for fiscal year 2020. And we're actually discussing cuts to the fixed route service at this time. If I might, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good point to emphasize. Mark has gone through a lot of information to show you where the... We expect the... Well, where the current revenue and expenditure performance is and where we expect it to be in the future. When you see those red lines exceeding the green lines, that is a very cautionary thing in our eyes. Would you, in reality, allow the red lines to continue to exceed the green lines? The answer to that is no. You would be managing this, and that's one of the reasons that Mark touched on, things like cost containment and assumptions about no expansion of fixed route service, because all you really are able to do, given the fact that you're controlled by two revenue sources, is make trade-offs on your expenditure side. The one trade-off you can really make on the expenditure side is the fixed route service that you're providing, either the number of service hours or the number of routes or both. As Mark indicated earlier, paratransit is not something that's as easily adjustable as the fixed route service may be. But that's essentially how you go about managing. And when you have an environment on a going-forward basis where the fare revenue is declining, the one route that you had that provided support to the other routes may not be able to do that much longer, and you have a rather volatile, although it's... Again, you know, you deal with it with C-tax in your own budgets, a reliance on sales tax that may or may not be there. The importance of doing long-range financial planning and having policies in place that help insulate you from some of those trends that you can see is exceedingly important. And when you go through this budget process, this next cycle, it will be extremely important to keep a number of these considerations in mind as you make some of those longer-term decisions. I just wanted to emphasize that, as we brought those final charts together, that didn't look as promising as we would like them to look. But it's a function of the way the revenues are structured. Thank you, Guy. Another... So we've gone over that slide. Another thing that we've been asked to provide are other possible sources of revenue for paratransit. And what we've done here is listed some examples from other communities, and these were mostly taken from Dr. Montero's slides from last... taken from Dr. Montero's slides from last month's board meeting. Possibilities listed, additional sales tax, contributions from local and state governments, and tax on TNCs, which was covered a little bit before. Agencies always look at what the possibility is for increasing fares, and a few others that weren't real popular in transit but were, had a few agencies that received these were property tax, new mortgage tax, vehicle registration fees, which could be, you know, considered with electric vehicles in the future, and then private sector contributions. So the next three slides are basically to summarize, and this one is we talk about revenue. As has been discussed, our unknowns are sales tax, the revenue with sales tax, and then our strip revenue. Where does that level off and, or even recover sometime in the future? The TNCs as competition on the strip? What are our future competitors in transportation, on the strip and in the general market? Are we going to, you know, have scooters and bicycles and who knows what in the future that might impact our revenue? As we look on the expense side, again, the hard one to manage is the paratransit expense. To emphasize, from 2008 to 16, we had a 46 percent increase in the paratransit expense. Again, we can't deny rides in paratransit, and we do have strict FTA and ADA compliance, as you saw in a previous presentation on the paratransit FTA review. Lot of regulations there that we need to provide the service in a strict way, as monitored and audited by the FTA. Fixed route increased by 14 percent. We have increased that by $19 million from 2008 to 2016. And our, we do have the ability in fixed route to adjust our expenses by adjusting the service hours. So what we like to do in managing our finances is we do have a target of six months of operating expense in cash reserves. We do that for several reasons, a couple of them being that to be competitive for FTA grants, we need to maintain that six months of a cash, of expenses in cash. If we do go below that, we will score lower in our competitive grants for transit. Our, the Governmental Finance Officers Association also finds that it's a best practice to maintain that healthy reserve. And to do that, we are going to be looking at cost containment measures in the future and exploring alternative revenue sources. And that's basically our prepared presentation. Would be glad to take any more questions.
Comments or questions? Mayor?
Just a couple of things. It would seem to me that other agencies around the country are dealing with the same thing, so maybe it's time to have a conversation with the FTA, to talk about maybe some of their policies and practices that have become onerous and that practices of yesterday were different. Now we have, you know, we have the Ubers and the Lifts now, and there's a lot of other circumstances that we're dealing with that maybe it's time to have that conversation. And I think that coupled with the fact that we're gearing up now for a legislative session, that we should be prepared with as much data and information to educate those who are decision-makers as to, you know, how we make sure that we're meeting the needs of the residents of, who really contribute a great deal to the state. And we should be looking at how we provide services to our community as well. So I think that there's some opportunities here for us to go both to the federal, before we start talking about taxes and assessments or other additional charges, we should also be ready to talk about how we have fair share and fair treatment.
Appreciate that comment. And the feds have been holding some roundtables to have conversations with transit agencies about some of the challenges that they're dealing with. And Deputy General Manager MJ Maynor and her team are going to put together for us the top 10 most arduous regulations that we are having to deal with, so we can communicate that.
Mayor Lee?
Hello? I haven't had a chance to really get into this yet with you, but I've experienced this in North Las Vegas, and I will tell you, it's better to start now than later. I'm not one for raising fees, but there are things that immediately need to probably take place. We probably need to put a subcommittee together, some of these members on this board. We probably make sure we only hire critical positions if you use CFO and revenue-producing people. I mean, you should probably duck your head right now and start a plan. I would not consider the legislature a viable option for you to survive. But I will say, more routes at this time, like you say, is not a good idea. But this will be very critical if you wait till after legislative session. And speed post haste is the way to get on top of this, and I wouldn't wait, Tina. It took me three years to get out of a problem that North Las Vegas thought would naturally take care of itself, and it took more drastic measures to fix the situation then, so.
Appreciate your sage advice. Thank you.
A couple of things. This is a great reality check here. Mark, you mentioned something earlier, it's not sustainable. And I certainly appreciate you've been monitoring this for the better part of three years. And I don't think that decline on ridership is going to change anytime soon, and that's in the next few fiscal cycles. And I also agree with Mayor Lee. As much as those revenue options are out there, the taxes and the fees and getting creative, I don't think we're even going to, the RTC and transit is going to register at this year's 19 session. I think education and some other priorities are going to get all the attention as far as these scarce dollars. What I do think that we really need to take a look at is the cost containment side. And Tina and I have this conversation for the better part of 18 months now, is what is a transit agency going to look like? We used to talk about five or 10 years in the future. It's now. And those ridership numbers, the ability to get people onto our system, not just the strip but throughout the system, they're just declining. And the competition of TNC and scooters and the next technology that we don't even know is here. So I'd like to maybe revisit, I know we did this a few years ago, if we could on December's meeting, do a presentation on the cost containment side as far as the fixed route, the process or the options we have as far as not only the hours but cutting routes. I know that that's a procedure that we go through, but we need to take a look at that. I don't think, in agreement with Mayor Lee, I don't think we can wait. We need to start preparing for that unsustainable reality that is here. And to do that, we need to address the things we can control today as an agency. And then going into, you mentioned the reserve, going into the upcoming budget cycle, let's take a look at some of our fiscal policies and reserve policies, and let's make sure that they're appropriate for the situation we're in today. Bottom line is, and if anybody in the audience or anybody nationwide has the answer, the real concern here is what a transit agency is going to become. I don't think the TNCs are going away. I think that is just going to compound the competition from a traditional fixed route system. And we have to, we can't be in a situation in a year or two that we have to dramatically take action. We have to start preparing just from an infrastructure and fundamental standpoint. We need to start preparing this agency for what looks like the inevitable. We're going to have to change the way we do business. Excellent presentation, and it's good to see these numbers.
Mr. Chairman?
Come here.
Can I just add to that? I agree with everything that's been said on the cost-cutting side, and I agree that we shouldn't hold our breath on the legislature. But if we don't start that dialogue now with the legislature, I mean, we might not get it in 19, but if we don't start it now, we won't get it in 21 either. It will be 23, and that's way too late. We've got impact dollars on these that are going to the state. We don't know how much. We need to figure out how much, you know, of that's going to NDOT and how much is just going into the general fund. But whether 3 percent is enough or it needs to go up to 4 or 5 percent, I don't know the answer to that, but we need to start that dialogue now.
And Mayor, good point. And as Angela indicated, maybe when we have our legislators in a room captive, we need to share some of these realities with them. So at least it gets on their radar screen, and those that will have leadership positions in Carson City, it's very difficult to get transit to the front of that. You know, it was, FRI succeeded when we were going to build the infrastructure community-wide, but the transit system is for select population, the paratransit for a select population. Now, one of the compelling arguments we have is the requirements, the federal requirements on the paratransit side. No one wants to cut, nor can we go in there and start cutting. And we almost use that as the platform to indicate, look at all these other things. When fixed route gets shrunk, paratransit gets harmed, future riders get harmed. But I agree, we need to put at least in their minds the challenge that we're going to face over the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, your last, oh, we're going to skip item number 28. We do not have a need to meet in closed doors. We'll go to item number 29, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
It's the second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Dorothy has left the building. Dorothy, were you taking a power nap again? All right. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry. What I want to discuss when I was at a meeting before about riding the bus, people lying. And I want my name off of this program. It's not helping to remove my name off of this program. And I want the police to let me out on Ellis. And not the security police, and, I mean, y'all, what are they playing for the people on the program? I really need my name off this program. The drug trafficking has run me into the poor health and poverty. The lies are no good. And they're ordering the disabled people to lie on me on the bus again. I can't stop this thing. Somebody has to get a grip on this thing. It's out of control. And I mean, I shouldn't have to leave this city, but that's what's about to happen. I'm going to have to do something. I'm getting older. I'm no good. Growing old and ugly and living in an insecure, unsafe situation here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Brown members, thank you again, Alita Dupree. It's good to be back after being in places with natural air conditioning and riding a number of different systems. So we had a good financial presentation today. I really enjoyed the charts and the clarity of it.
Mr. Chairman, I cannot hear these gentlemen. Is it my ears or?
We need to keep.
And back, and it's not just you, it's the mic. Back of the house, could you turn up the microphones? See if that one's any better.
All right. So we need to keep the focus on that. I did see you signed another bus contract, so hopefully we can get these new long buses on the road with more of the sideways-facing blue seats. We could get these double-deckers off the road. It's hard to climb stairs when the bus is rocking around, so it's important in the next few years to really stay focused on this. And I read a report in New York City, the average lifespan of a paper transit ticket is 15 swipes. I experienced that personally with a metro car that failed on me after six days, about that many swipes. So I use the app, and I'm going to continue to use the app. It's very helpful. I want to see more people use the app. But I think that we should have App Plus Stored Value Card instead of App Plus Paper Tickets. So this card, this tap card, can give me tens of thousands of swipes over its useful life. I get those every three to five years. So we can reduce those costs and to incentivize the prepayment of our fares, to encourage people to use the Stored Value Cards and the app, because the cost of processing hard cash is very expensive, and that's, we can program that money into other things that will help me to ride the buses. And as a user of the app, I have seen in other cities that there are single-ride tickets available on apps. I did so on the monorail in Seattle now, new thing. So I generally don't use single-rides on the app, but I think that is another option to add to the menu, so we can have a complete menu of the fares on the app. And we are shovel-ready with the Stored Value Cards. I have the new version of the RTC card. The fare boxes have little bullseye for the fare taps and hopefully to go to open-source payment sometime. So thank you again. I'm in and out, but when I leave out of here, I plan to get on another bus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chandra Armstrong, and I'd like you to note a couple of numbers. 500-plus are the days that the Washington project has been going on, from Martin Luther King was to Rainbow and now to Rancho. 500 days this project has been going on, where we've had lane closures on, in our community. 59 of those days, the bus stop at Robin has been closed. My son is a junior at Advanced Technologies High School, and he plays tennis for Western High School. And he has not been able to ride the bus from that stop since summer. 30 days plus, now even more, are the number of days, this 130-day stance, where there was no open bus stop, from J Street in Washington to Valley View in Washington, a distance of about 1.45 miles. This is a community that is severely transit-dependent. We have encouraged our children, I have three of them, I've been working for the RTC for almost 23 years. I believe in what we do. And I've had all my sons ride the bus. We had no bus service in either direction for over 30 days. Right now, we have no open bus stops between Comstock and Rancho on Washington. They were out again today moving cones this morning when I came to the office. I have written to City of Las Vegas about this issue. I have talked with RTC staff about this issue. We actually have a process where people who are doing construction on our streets are not allowed to close stops, two stops at a time. There is a breakdown between our desire to use fuel tax dollars to improve streets and our ability to allow our transit riders to ride. When I was going through this process and talking to the city, I even had a city employee say, "Well, just have your kid use Uber." Another competitor for what we do. To me, we have a breakdown, and there has to be some communication between our desire to improve our streets and whether or not we are retaining the 13 percent of people that fuel our income to get them to stay on our buses. If we don't pay attention to this, that 13 percent is going to be less. This is important. When we are working on streets, we have got to keep bus stops open. And I'm hopeful that the RTC will work with our municipalities to get this done. But this is important. But this is important. We have hundreds of projects in design. This is not just Washington. This is every other street that we are working on throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robin Kincaid, and this is the ninth time that I've come before the Commission to speak about the concerns regarding the fixed route and paratransit services. You know, my daughter Kayla Kincaid still cannot access, you know, her church, the assigned post office for our community and potential employment opportunities. It's become really evident in the last nine times that I have come to speak that there really isn't a process in place to expand the fixed route or even to reassign the fixed route. I know that there has been some talk that there is, but it is very clear after our continued information that we've received and looked at that there really isn't, which impacts the paratransit service area. Previously, I talked about a premium-priced area to cover some of those fingers and those areas that are keeping people from accessing post offices, churches. We saw in our last meeting that individuals couldn't go visit the cemetery or attend a funeral on Jones because of the lack of access. So it's not a matter of whether or not you live in the service area. I have to remind you again that it is about getting to particular, having access to businesses and friends and other things, churches and communities that are not in the service area. That's just not acceptable. I would suggest, as we go forward, that, you know, some of your ideas to try to help with the cost would be having employees and contractors and individuals that work with the RTC submit cost-containment ideas. Many private industries do that. They reward people for their ideas and their concepts, and sometimes, as we dig deeper, we can find different ways for cost containment. But I don't think as a city, as a state, are we actually saying we're gonna close the door and we're not allowing any more growth? Because that is not what's happening. This continues, continuing to grow, and I don't understand how we are going to just say, "Well, we'll take care of these citizens, but not these citizens." Maybe we don't expand the service area, the fixed route, to everyone in the entire state. But we certainly have to recognize, or otherwise, we really need to be looking at growth and containment for costs, and, you know, maybe everyone that a house is built, maybe they're contributing in some ways to the transportation needs. Again, I know some of those ideas have been floated around, but we really need to do that. I would also, also would like to just ask about the study regarding the excessive trip lengths. I know Mr. Rodriguez, he mentioned that there was a study, and I would like to, we'd like to see the copy of the study. We think that the whole FTA audit has not been a transparent process. I mean, I personally had to come and tell the Commission that there was such an audit, and we still are very concerned about that. We'd also like to know about the complaint law history on those excessive trip lengths. I know that I have to call. It requires the individual or their family to call about those excessive trip lengths. And I've never seen any kind of data that talks about that, or do we accumulate that data? And so in conclusion, I would hope that the Commission, you know, would find a way to expand the paratransit service. As we've seen, and I've seen in the last year, you know, it is really is affecting the ability of citizens to be able to access essential services. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Hi, Rita Varney. I've testified before too, not as, on a regular basis as Stephanie and Robin and Havander have, but I have been here also as a parent of an adult child. I live outside of the service area. I'm really disappointed. My disappointment has gone clear back quite a few months now, but I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in empty chairs that I'm seeing right now. I'm disappointed that my voice doesn't count at the end of a meeting, that committee members don't feel enough that they can sit here throughout a whole meeting that they've committed to. I'm disappointed in an audit that actually suggests that they recommend that a service area is not extended. A service area that I live in, that my daughter lives in, that my daughter is now pretty much trapped in her house unless I or a friend, because we don't have the family, can transport her. I'm disappointed that the one key word that keeps coming up here is managing, managing, managing. I sat through another meeting and listened to you approve water systems. You know where the houses are being built. You're managing. You know where we're building. The bus systems are not going out there. The transportation systems are not going out there. You're collecting taxes from those homes, from my home, from me. And when you raise taxes to pay for the extended area, wherever you choose to put it, maybe not an extended area in my area, but those are my taxes paying for that too. My disappointment goes beyond, and I can't believe that there, that you continue to sit here and say that there's nothing that can be done. I've actually gone and driven those roads, driven those developments, driven those neighborhoods. Have you? I've actually seen buses parked in the parking lot with the bus driver's feet on the side while they're taking a nap, while they're waiting for whoever for their next trail that they get their transport home, or transport to the next job, or whatever. But in the meantime, they're sitting in a parking lot with their feet on the dashboard. I see empty trucks or empty buses all the time. Our buses are too big for the people that we're transporting. It's not necessary to have a side-load bus for every transport. We need more suggested use for our time use, for our scheduling, for the time of the actual drivers themselves. There's a whole lot of things that can be done to save money before you even think about raising my taxes for an area that I'm not getting help in. I think what we need to do is work on getting back a service area that we had in the past, that obviously we have existing homes in that area, and then from there, grow into the existing homes that we're seeing built continuously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Good morning. In this presentation earlier, I heard that we lost over $5 million in revenue from strip transportation. But yet, the bus runs there every seven minutes, seven to 14 minutes. That's a bus going up and down the street, seven minutes, 14 minutes. If those people aren't, if people aren't riding those buses, then we need to cut the frequency. We need to change. If we're not getting revenue there, then there should not be a bus going there. Yesterday, I sat at my job over 20 minutes after the expected 30-minute window, waiting on a bus. And when the bus got there, I was the only person on that bus. My driver, I don't know where he was or what happened, they had to give this driver overtime to come pick me up. But people like me can't even get service. People like me can't even get transportation to go where they need to go, but yet, people on the strip get the bus for every seven minutes, and sometimes, there's nobody on those buses. So if revenue is down on the strip, that would dictate that buses should be down on the strip. Help persons with disabilities by cutting where it's necessary to be cut at. Don't cut our service because you lose money on the strip where people aren't riding the bus, but they still get the bus every seven minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Veznik, and before I start my testimony, I do want to publicly show my appreciation to Alberto and Mark from Silver State Transportation, who stepped up to the plate at the last meeting and is currently helping me and my son. Thank you, guys. So I'm speaking before you for the 12th time. Every time I've testified, my message has been the same: Restore the service area to the way it was in 2011. Everyone on the Commission is familiar with my situation, as I have shared my story several times over the last 12 months. Last month, we were presented with a PowerPoint presentation on the peer review study. I have not had the opportunity to completely finish reading the full 255-page report that was conducted by Dr. Heather Montero. I don't know if this Commission has received the report. Have they read the report? From what I have read, I don't believe it has covered and has looked at the steady growth and the needs of this community. One part in the report states, "Because of the majority of responding peer agencies, they do not provide service outside the service area." So it's suggested that RTC not provide service outside the service area. Like I said, I haven't finished reading the report, the full report, but what I have read so far, it doesn't seem to offer any suggestions on expanding the service area. What is the Commission going to do? Are you just going to do nothing? There must be a solution. I am not only here for my son, but I'm here for all the other individuals that are not receiving transportation that they deserve. Individuals with disabilities depend on family members, siblings, or close friends to get them to essential places. When they don't have those individuals to transport them, then what happens? Do they give up their jobs? Don't go to their doctor appointments? Don't go to the grocery store? These are not luxury places. These are essential places for anyone to live an independent life. We all have jobs. We all go to the doctors. We shop at the grocery stores. As I previously stated, a community that excludes even one of its members is no community at all. You are not excluding one member, you are excluding a whole population that is part of this community. In closing, the Americans with Disability Act was designed to protect the rights of people with disabilities, to give them access to transportation. Restore the service area to the way it was in 2011. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? Seeing and hearing no one, close this portion of public comment. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.[1778.82][1778.82]